Good evening, everyone. It's Monday, August 15th. It is 7:02 PM. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Council members Martin, Maurer, Formicaella, Wales, here in person. Electronically, our council members O'Rourke and Rooney. I am going to ask for a vote of the council to add a matter to our consent calendar for passage. It is a communication that we received from the tax collector to the town council chair dated August 10th, 2022 relating to the funds. I'm going to ask that it be added to our consent calendar as item E. And it is a motion for the tax collector to grant the tax collector's request funds dated August 10th, 2022 in the amount of $10,924.33. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Donald Wales. Any other discussion? This is a routine matter that's always on consent calendar. We received that document in our packet. It was an oversight that it was not part of the consent calendar this evening. All right. So this is adding it to our agenda as item E as an add-on. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes 6-2-0. That's item E on our agenda. I'm going to ask that we pass the consent calendar as presented and amended if there's no objection. Hearing no objection, I'm going to pass the consent calendar as amended. I'm going to ask that communication items A through Y be incorporated into our meeting. Public participation. I will start with those members of the public that are here in person tonight. Is there any member of the public that would like to participate at this time? Is there any member of the public that would like to participate that's here electronically, either through a phone or laptop or other device? Please remember, unmute yourself. Hearing none, I'm going to close public participation. We've won appointment tonight. I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2293, resolved that the town council, Monroe Town Council hereby approves the first selectman's appointment of Chrissy Fensoor Martinez of 79 Old Castle Drive to the Youth Commission as a member representing a private youth serving agency with a term ending October 12, 2023, and a conditional contingent upon Ms. Martinez remaining affiliated with a private youth serving agency. Is there a motion?
So.
Motion by Ms. Martin. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Maurer. Discussion, Ms. Martin?
Yeah, Mrs. Martinez holds a bachelor's and a master's degree in special education from Southern Connecticut State University. Her current role is as a senior director of school partnerships for Aspire Living and Learning Incorporated, a non-profit human services agency that serves youth and adults with disabilities. She oversees the consultation to school districts. Chrissy's enthusiastically ready to give back to the community by serving on the Youth Commission.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes 6-2-0. She is not here this evening. All right. Action items: Town Council, Committee on Finance, Education, Health, and Public Safety Matters. Vice Chair Lepelis is not here. I do not believe they have met since our last meeting. Town Council, Command, Plan, Zoning, Public Works, and Park and Recreation Matters. Ms. Rooney, any other?
No, we have not met, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Martin?
Could you inquire, Mr. Rooney, if he plans to have?
Mr. Rooney, are you working on getting a meeting scheduled in the future?
I know we have some things going on in Parks and Rec there of concern, but nothing that's brought to my attention that needs to be addressed to council. However, we could have a meeting if any of the members feel the need, but at this point there's no direct need.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Rooney. I would ask that members of that commission, if you believe a meeting is necessary, to reach out to Chairman Rooney to schedule a meeting.
Mr. Chairman?
All right. Town Council Committee on Legislative and Administrative Matters. Mr. Reed. Did I make this meeting?
Aye.
By the update, the LNA referred the following matters to Town Council which appear on our agenda. Item Resolution 2292, 2295, 2296, 2297, 2298, 2299, 22101, 22102, 22103, and 22104. All those matters were referred to Town Council for its consideration, including General Code Sales Order Turned In Commission, which was passed during the consent calendar. Item B on our agenda, the LNA agenda, proposed discontinuation of the portion of Springfield Road. That matter was passed in LNA. Later this evening, I will ask the Town Council to not act on that resolution tonight as the applicant would like to make a revision to the application. So it was not ripe for consideration at our meeting this evening.
Will I go back to LNA?
Yes. 2294, which was the proposed discontinuance of the portion of Springfield Road, was not voted out of LNA tonight as it was not ripe for consideration. Okay. And that is what happened in LNA. All right. Strategic Plan, A meeting. I can't remember if... Yes, this is the first meeting that we've had since our fire study and vehicle meeting. All right, so I guess I have to give an up for that. All right. So what happened at that meeting was the committee heard from the various three fire departments about vehicle replacement plan. The departments gave great detail as to their ideal fleet, what they can work with now, what they need now. I thought it was pretty informative to the committee on that. The only action taken at that meeting, though, was to recommend to the council, as well as the first selectman, that the first selectman's office work with the three fire departments to come to a service agreement, as recommended by the fire study. Correct. Anything else?
No.
All right. Mr. Rooney, EMS Building Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Everything is going as planned, steady and sound. The only thing I have to report to the council is, early on in the project, we had to move the EMS personnel out of the building into a trailer while we were renovating their quarters. I'm happy to report, it looks like about three weeks those should be completed. I did a site visit today. I was there about an hour and a half, walking around. We have painting, heat, tiling going on, so it looks like maybe two to three weeks we can get them out of the trailer and get them into decent living quarters. We will be able to remove that trailer, which we are renting, so that'll be a cost that'll go out the window. At this point, there's nothing more to report. Everything's going very smooth and very swiftly. I recommend that anybody on this council, if they go by, just go in and take a look. It's pretty impressive what's starting to happen now. So this is the fun time where the sheetrock gets put on and it's really starting to look like something, the glass is in and things of that nature. So nothing more to report than that, just happy to see them, hopefully, in the next couple of weeks, out of that trailer and into their new quarters. And that's all I have to report. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Rooney. Mr. O'Rourke, anything on the Open Space Preservation and Acquisition Committee?
Mr. Chairman, we have not met since our last meeting.
Thank you, Mr. O'Rourke. Mr. Keller?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I want to start out tonight with an update on the Pepper Street reconstruction project. I know that this item is on your agenda a little bit later in your agenda for discussion in further detail, as well as to entertain change order as relates to BL companies. But I did want to provide an update in regards to the frustration that I share in regards to the delays that have occurred on that project. As you know, from my last update on the matter, I asked Town Attorney Frank Lido to get involved in reviewing this matter as well. I am happy to report that we have gotten assurances from the general contractor that their revised project schedule has committed to the project being substantially completed before the end of this calendar year, and specifically by November of this year. We know that there's been significant delays in utility company caused matters, pandemic-related supply chain issues. There is some utility work that remains, but none of that is expected to be in the way of allowing the project to be completed in timely fashion, and we expect that not to be a substantial issue going forward. There's been a significant amount of work done by town staff, the legal team headed up by Frank, our onsite consultant BL Companies, and Connecticut DOT as well, which must approve all the reimbursements, which, as you recall, covers 90% of the project cost. So it's a significant, they play a significant role in the oversight of this project as well. I communicated very clearly to them my demand that they devote the necessary resources to ensure this project will be completed this year. As I said, they have made that commitment. The project, as you know, has a lot of aspects to it beyond just simple repaving. There's a portion of the roadway that's actively being lowered at this time, which I know is significant and rather disruptive, but that is the project. That is a portion of this project, as well as a phrase to the traffic signal at Main Street. There's drainage improvements, most significant of which is a complete replacement of the culvert at Jockey Hallow Road. So all those, we expect to be done in earnest. I've also demanded that the contractor provide regular updates on their progress and milestones in a way that we can clearly communicate to our residents going forward, which we will share as we receive them. And again, be happy to talk in more detail later on in our meeting on this project when we get to that on the agenda. A couple of business updates. Ederton has applied for new construction of a 8,600-square-foot facility for fabrication, warehousing, and storage at their existing location on Main Street. And BioMarix has a significant expansion and a renovation to space that was vacated by prior tenants at 246 Main Street. BioMarix will then occupy the entire facility. The Planning and Zoning Commission recently approved that expansion of the existing use, the exterior improvements, and a zone change from the B2 to an I1 district to be more comport with the industrial nature of the use there. So all of that has been completed. As you probably heard from an update I gave to the public a couple of weeks ago, the town did receive approval for a $150,000 award from the State Bond Commission. This will be utilized for repairs to the basketball courts at Wolf Park. This is a project that has been on our capital plan, and I'm pleased that the application I submitted to Senator Marilyn Moore was supported, not only by her, but by the rest of our state delegation, State Representative Scott and Senator Kelly. And we look forward to moving this forward. The Department of Energy and Environmental Protection will be the oversight agency for the state. We've been in touch with them already, and we will be working with them to finalize a contract to be submitted for your consideration at a future meeting. So we're excited that we'll be able to get this project done and also reduce the need for municipal bonding to get it completed. As has become somewhat routine, Kerma has declared another equity distribution. We received a check for $68,098 from them. Again, that's our prorated share of their equity distribution for 2022. This program's been in existence for over a decade now, and we're certainly grateful to be getting a rebate, so to speak. And last but not least, a couple of updates that I received from EverSource that I've been seeking and wanted to pass on. One is related to the work that they were doing subsequent to some of the issues at the substation on Fayette Hill Road. As you know, we completed all the immediate work to stabilize the substation back in March. At that time, they also said they'd be completely replacing the two source circuits that feed that substation as further protection. They've advised that they are continuing to replace poles from that station going north, and I'm sure anyone who's traveled that portion of Monroe Turnpike has seen activity there on a daily basis. They are working on hanging equipment, not just on those poles, but also equipment from the Stevenson Dam West towards the boat launches proceeding. And finally, they are anticipating that delivery of the aerial cable wires will occur in three different phases, September, November, and January of next year, and then they will be installing that as that comes in. In addition to that, EverSource also has embarked on a major project that will rebuild the existing transmission lines between the Stevenson Substation here in town and the Pootituck Substation in Shelton. So most of this work is in Shelton, but it will certainly, it will start out in Webb Mountain and head over to Shelton from there. Portions of this infrastructure were built back in the '30s, and EverSource will be replacing all of the lattice towers. There's 117 of them, which will be replaced with steel monopoles. They will also be replacing wires and something called optical ground wire, which is designed to improve reliability, to allow communications between the substations as well. They have filed with the Siting Council, and their goal is to start the project in the last quarter of this year and to be completed by the end of 2023. There's also a website that you can get, you and residents can get more information as well on that project. And that's my update for tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Maurer? Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, First Selectman, for the update. A couple of quick questions on the Pepper Street update. One is, could you describe, or do we know what substantial completion involves?
So as I understand it, and our deputy director of public works is here, so he can interject if I misspeak, but substantial completion would allow for BL companies, the ones providing inspection services, to complete basically their final inspection. So it would not, there would be punchless type items remaining, but the road would be paved, it would be travelable, it would be, it would look and feel essentially completed.
All the laboring would be done, all of...
Right, right, all that. I mean, there could still be ancillary work on the trail, on, you know, like I said, punchless items here and there, but it would essentially look and feel like a completed roadway. My...
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And then the other question is, do we have an idea of how often these regular updates will be happening? Are they tied? Don't tie. They tied to just like every...
I've asked to get updates at least every couple of weeks.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
That's all. All right. Moving on, we have no other action items this evening. We have no matters of unfinished business this evening. I have a motion to accept the following donations that individually exceed $1,500. $2,500 from Town Fair Tire Foundation, Inc. for EMS, and $2,600 from Union Savings Bank Foundation for the Food Pantry. Can I have a move? Pushed by Mr. Maurer. Is there a second?
Second.
A little close.
He sounded the same.
Donald Wells. All right. Mr. Keller?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just again, our thanks to both these organizations. I do want to note for the record that Union Savings Bank Foundation is the correct entity. I apologize, there was an error in the name of the bank on my cover memo on the agenda, due to a clerical error, but we're certainly very grateful for both these donations. And in particular, we know that the Food Pantry donation will certainly go to those in need, and as always, our EMS will put those funds to good use.
Thank you, Mr. Keller. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, accepting those donations, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes 6-2-0. As I stated before during the LNA update, Resolution 2294 was not voted out of LNA. And because of that, they would need a two-thirds vote of council to bypass that recommendation. I'm also going to state what I said before, and I'm going to ask that this matter pass to the next meeting based upon a possible revision to the request by the applicant because further analysis is needed from the town departments. So if there's nothing else, I'm just going to pass this item.
Are you sure what further analysis is being looked at?
Well, there's a change in the application, so the town departments have to review it again.
Okay.
So this item will be moved to unfinished business at our next meeting. All right. I am see Resolution 2295, Consider An Act Upon A Resolution Regarding Acovelo and Company, LLC Auditor Engagement Letter. All right. Can I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2295, Resolve That Kenton and Kellogg, First Selectmen of Town Monroe, Is Authorized to Execute and Deliver on Behalf of Town Monroe, the Auditor Engagement Letter and Any Associated Documents Bound Between Acovelo and Company, LLC for the auditing services, or WMNR?
WMNR.
All right. Motion by Mr. Maurer. Is there a second?
Second.
Else, Mr. Keller?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This firm has been conducting auditing services for WMNR for several years. Kurt Anderson, our general manager, has recommended that we continue. It's been reviewed by the town attorney. I ask that you move this forward so we can continue the services from this firm.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 2295, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes 6-2-0. Item D, Resolution 2296, Consider An Act Upon A Resolution Regarding First Amendment to Generini Construction Contract. Can I have a motion to adopt the following resolution? Resolution 2296, Resolve That Kenton and Kellogg, First Selectmen of Town Monroe, Is Authorized to Execute and Deliver on Behalf of Town Monroe, First Amendment to the Construction Agreement and Any Associated Documents Bound Between Generini Construction Company, Incorporated, for the Town Hall Campus Safety and Security Improvements Project. Can I have a move? Motion by Mr. Maurer. Is there a second?
Second.
By Donald Wells. Mr. Keller?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as you know, the town has a contract with Generini Construction that we entered earlier this year for the substantial portion of the Town Hall Doors and Security Upgrades project. At the time, the project was anticipated to be completed by September 1st. They've advised us that due to supply chain issues, they are still unable to get the materials necessary for the project, and they've asked that we provide an extension, which I and our public works department are comfortable with allowing. We have before you, excuse me, the First Amendment to that contract, which would extend the agreement through May 30th of '23, leaving all other terms and conditions intact. And you have the town attorney's letter in this regard as well.
Thank you, Mr. Keller. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 2296, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes 6-2-0. Item E, Resolution 2297, Consider Action? Yes. Would it be appropriate for us to consider Resolutions 22-97, 22-98, and 22-99 together as they can... I can make the motion. It would be my preference to just make it clean for the record, to do each individually. Okay. That's fine. I appreciate the offer, though. All right. 2297, I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2297, Resolve That Kenton and Kellogg, First Selectmen of Town Monroe, Is Authorized on Behalf of Town Monroe, Can Consent to the Terms of Service, All Season Procedures, and Any Associated Documents Bound Between Buffer, Incorporated, and that the First Selectman is further authorized to delegate such authorization to specific town employees. So move. Motion by Mr. Maurer. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Donald Wells. Mr. First Selectman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is one of three agreements before you tonight, which are really consenting to online Terms of Service, various other policies for online providers of various services that we'd like to employ minimally for the library. The Director of Library has identified various opportunities to improve different services. The first one before you is for Buffer, Incorporated, which allows for social media crossposting and will make them more efficient in increasing the library's presence and productivity online.
Thank you, Mr. Keller. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 2297, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes 6-0. Item F, Resolution 2298, I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2298, Resolve That Kenton and Kellogg, First Selectmen of Town Monroe, Is Authorized on Behalf of Town Monroe, To Consent to the Terms of Use, Privacy Policy, User Consent, and Any Associated Documents Bound Between the American Library Association for its Project Outcome Initiative, and that the First Selectman is further authorized to delegate such authorization to specific town employees. Is there a motion? So move. Motion by Mr. Maurer. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Donald Wells. Keller?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is similar to the earlier matter. In this case, the service is provided by the American Library Association. Their tool, Project Outcome, which will provide the library with online survey capabilities and a lot of backend reporting and metrics that the library directory wishes to employ.
Thank you, Mr. Keller. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 2298, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes 6-0. Item G, Resolution 2299, I have a motion to adopt the following resolution. Resolution 2299, Resolve That Kenton and Kellogg, First Selectmen of Town Monroe, Is Authorized on Behalf of Town Monroe, To Consent the Contributor Agreement, Content License Agreement, Terms of Use, and Privacy Policy, and Any Associated Documents Bound Between Canva Party Limited, and that the First Selectman is further authorized to delegate such authorization to specific town employees. I have a motion. So move. Pushed by Mr. Maurer. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Donald Wells. Mr. Keller?
Thank you. Last but not least, Canva, I'm sure many are aware of it, is an online provider of various marketing materials, which will allow the library to be more efficient and provide much better marketing materials, flyers, et cetera. And this is a specific service that they have for nonprofit agencies.
Thank you, Mr. Keller. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 2299, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes six to zero.
226?
Sometimes it's muffled on there. All those opposed, please say nay. Hearing no nays. Item H, Resolution 22100. I have a motion to adopt Resolution 22100, resolve that Kenton and Kellogg First Selectmen of Town Monroe is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town Monroe the DMV Direct Agreement and any associated documents binding between Connecticut Tax Collectors Association for direct online access to certain DMV records.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Mauer, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Donald Wells. Mr. Kellogg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the Connecticut Tax Collectors Association provides, uh, in collaboration with the state of Connecticut, uh, this service that will provide, uh, municipal, uh, authorize municipal employees in the tax collector's office, uh, direct online access to certain DMV records. Uh, this will provide them with greater efficiency, uh, in their tax collection act, efforts, and, uh, you have the town attorney's opinion in this regard.
Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'm gonna call for vote, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes six to zero. Uh, new business, item I, Resolution 22101. I have a motion to adopt Resolution 22101, resolve that Kenton and Kellogg First Selectmen of Town Monroe is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town Monroe. See pace partial release agreement and any associated documents binding between the Connecticut Green Bay FAA Clean Energy Finance and Investment Authority for the C-PACE program. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Mauer, is there a second?
Second.
Let me give it to Ms. Martin. Mr. Kellogg.
Thank you. Uh, in March of 2017, the town entered into an agreement, uh, with the, uh, the predecessor of the Connecticut Green Bank, uh, for this commercial property, assess clean energy or C-PACE agreement. Uh, the program was, uh, such that, uh, C-PACE, the, the, the Green Bank could provide, uh, loan financing to, uh, incentivize commercial, uh, projects for clean energy improvements. Uh, and the agreement allowed a local mechanism to basically have the town, uh, put lean on the, uh, lean on the property for security for repayment of the loan through the tax collector's office. You've got a copy of the original agreement in your packet. Uh, the program has now evolved such that the Connecticut Green Bank can work directly with the program participants, uh, in this program, uh, and removes the town from the process. They have provided the partial release agreement that you had before you that would release the town from our obligations. Um, I have confirmed with the tax collector and the town clerk that we do not have any current liens enforcing any properties, uh, under the program at this time, and you have the town attorney's, uh, letter of opinion in this matter as well. So I'd ask that we move this forward so we can provide the partial, consent to the partial, uh, release agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'm gonna call for vote, all those in favor of adopting Resolution 22101, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes six to zero. Item J, Resolution 22102. I have a motion to adopt Resolution 22-102, resolve that Kenton and Kellogg First Selectmen of Town Monroe is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe. Contract and any associated documents binding between Wengel, McDonnell, and Costello Incorporated for consulting services for the Judd Road Bridge Rehabilitation Project.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Mauer, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Donald Wells. Mr. Kellogg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, again, uh, a project you're all aware of. Uh, we're working in collaboration with the town of Easton for the Judd Road Bridge Rehabilitation Effort. Uh, you'll recall that this project was approved by the state for, uh, lots of funding, uh, in the amount of just over $1 million. Um, that is for construction. The design costs are cover, are, um, the responsibility of the municipalities. Um, we, as you'll recall, we also have enforced an existing, uh, local agreement with the town of Easton, uh, pursuant to which, uh, each town will contribute 50% of those design costs. Um, as a lead agency, uh, the, uh, the town, uh, worked with, uh, a QBS process, uh, and subsequent RFP to, uh, identify a design engineering, uh, firm to provide services to, uh, complete design and be able to go out to bid. Um, that process resulted in a recommendation to proceed with Wengel, McDonnell, and Costello. Uh, the town of Easton was, uh, part of those, uh, decisions as well, so they're fully aware and, and, um, in, in agreement with this, uh, direction. The total cost of the design portion of, uh, of this project, uh, including their estimated contingency, comes to $88,000. Um, so that would be funded through a prior capital reserve that was, uh, enforced for $50,000 and the balance being covered by Town Aid Road Grant. Um, this has been reviewed by the town attorney. You have, uh, before you the agreement, which includes by reference the, not just the contract, but the RFP, the addendums, and the proposal from Wengel, McDonnell, and Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. Any other discussion? Ms. Martin.
The, um, the Town Road Aid Grant, that cover the rest of it?
Yes. Oh, yes, well, yes, without any, um, there's definitely, um, definitely sufficient funds to cover the delta there.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting Resolution 22-102, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes six to zero. Resolution, uh, item K, Resolution 22103. I have a motion to adopt Resolution 22103, resolve that Kenton and Kellogg First Selectmen of Town Monroe is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town Monroe the Pest Control Contract and any associated documents binding between ABC Exterminating Incorporated for Pest Control Services at the Food Pantry. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Mauer, is there a second?
Second.
By Donald Wells, Mr. Kellogg.
Thank you. Uh, our community and social services director, Kim Casio, uh, would like to change the vendor we utilize for the routine, uh, preventative services, uh, at the food pantry. Um, they should like to proceed with, uh, ABC Exterminating, which is a Monroe business, and, uh, they provided their, um, uh, their contract, which is attached and is due by the town attorney, and I ask that they move this forward.
Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'm gonna call for vote, all those in favor of adopting Resolution 22103, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes six to zero. Item L, Pepper Street Reconstruction Project. I have a motion to enter executive session inviting, uh, who do you want?
Uh, I'd like it to invite the town, the town attorney, myself, and deputy director, Bill Phillips.
Okay. Is there a, is there a motion?
I believe I heard a motion from Mr. Rooney.
Right. There we go. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Donald Wells. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'm gonna call for vote about entering executive session. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes six to zero. We are entering executive session at 7:41 PM. Mr. First Selectman, can you please stop the recording? All right, we are out of executive session and it's 8:13 PM. No votes were taken. Hearing our executive session, we are on item L2, Resolution 22104.
Can I have a chair?
Yes.
Before we go on, uh, just one quick request of the selectmen. Uh, the public update that you gave earlier in the meeting, I think it would go a long way if, uh, that could get sent out, whether it's by the selectmen's email list or by the Facebook Monroe-
Facebook page.
I know, there's been a lot of discussions that, that could go a long way towards helping those of you.
And my plan was to do it at the conclusion of this meeting. I wanted to give the council respect of giving you the update in advance.
Much appreciated. Thank you very much, Mr. Selectman.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I have a motion to adopt Resolution 22-104, resolve that Kenton and Kellogg First Selectmen of Town Monroe is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town Monroe, the Change Order Number Two, and any associated documents binding between BL Companies for the Pepper Street Reconstruction Project. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Mauer, is there a second?
Second.
By Donald Wells, Mr. Kellogg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, um, obviously we've discussed the Pepper Street Project. Uh, I discussed it earlier in my report to council, uh, at length. I know we, uh, just had a, um, further detailed discussion in regards to the project and the, um, overall, uh, general contractor. Um, this matter, however, is, uh, in regards to BL Companies, which is, uh, not the, uh, not the general contractor, but our, um, inspection, uh, it's our engineering, uh, firm that also is providing inspection services, uh, during construction. Um, and as you see before you, uh, to allow us, uh, to continue utilizing their, their services, um, as this project continues and, uh, to have that service without interruption, um, we ask that you entertain this change order number two, uh, so that they can continue. Um, they've been, uh, very supportive and integral in, uh, assisting the town, uh, providing resources that we would not have in-house to, uh, conduct a level of, uh, daily, um, uh, inspection and, uh, communication with the general contractor that's required. Um, again, um, this is with everything else, is covered 90% uh, through the, through the project. Uh, you have the town attorney's, uh, letter of opinion in this regard, and we ask that you move this forward again so that we continue to can have the services of BL as our eyes and ears, uh, on this project.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'm gonna call for vote, all those in favor of adopting Resolution 22104, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes six to zero. Uh, we do have an unresolved matter of new business this evening to, I should ring. Uh, Resolution 2294, is there any member of the public that would like to speak in regard to Resolution 2294? Name and address for the record.
You have a vote before sixty-four, here in Town Road. Um, I have, I have concerns about this resolution because, um, I don't know where the applicant, who the applicant is that requested this resolution. And my concern is because, I mean, as I'm being a member of the county consulting, I had questions in front of me coming too, that there's other people that are on that road, that are the properties that are on that road, and when we abandoned that road, I had concerns that we didn't contact all the other property owners, which would get an answer on that because I asked the town planner if you can find these other people that were going to abandon this road. Because there's, I know, for example, there's one property on that road that if you ban the roads, it's not becoming an interior lot. That's up on the Bible, that's uptaking because if the person has the road for his lot, all of a sudden it starts to be an interior lot. I have an issue with that. The other issue I have with is where all the other property owners notified of this property, the, the road being, you know, discontinued. And so I have that concern and, and I, when I brought that up in, in, in my commission, they said that, that would be handled by town council. And so I don't know if that's how you're gonna handle that or, I, I, I have concerns that when you begin the road and you don't notify the rest of property owners so they can have input, I have an issue with that. And that's why I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rose. Uh, what, I know I, I, I do not have to, uh, answer from this, but, uh, the Resolution, um, 2294 authorizes the First Selectmen to go forward with the notification process in regard to the abandoned road. And that was what the action was going to be this evening, where the, for, we are authorizing the First Selectmen to notify the, uh, those in the area, according to state law, that they will be notified, and then future action of town council would be 30 days after that notification. Is that correct, Mr.?
It would be a minimum of 30 days. There's a, there's a 30-day, uh, there's a, there's a notice, statutory notice to the butters. There's also a 30-day requirement, signage posted, uh, on all ends of the roadway, uh, that would be discontinued. And, um, the other question, that was previously going to be considered would simply start that process, um, of engaging those, uh, residents. But I do know that, um, as I said earlier, um, the, uh, the applicant and that is in the town council packet, which is public, uh, this evening, so that request is, uh, is in the packet. Uh, they had asked that we, um, they want to take another look at that, and, uh, that's why I advise it wasn't ripe for consideration tonight anyway, so there'll be more opportunity to discuss it further.
Okay. So, see, the motion tonight, if there was a motion, would be to authorize the First Selectmen to begin the process of notification. The town council could not act on the discontinuance of the road, if any, until after that notification was given, at least 30 days after that notification.
Correct.
Would that be brought back to the planning and zoning commission?
That I am not sure.
No, the statutory requirement is strictly for the A24, doesn't, it would be go, I don't believe it would go back to P2.
So it won't come back to the planning and zoning? It won't come back to planning and zoning? Shouldn't ask that question. You know that or not?
I don't believe so. So at this time, none was part of the process.
So what was the process of planning and zoning?
The A24 referral.
Right, planning and zoning, but I just wanna, I just wanna get this clear because, you know, I have, I have a problem with it. Planning and zoning commission, request to abandon the road. We have never notified anybody about abandoning the road, so we wouldn't have any input into our commission from these residents to abandon the road. And so basically, our decision wouldn't happen. We couldn't make a decision if, if we didn't have the residents in front of us. I mean, it doesn't even come down to where planning and zoning recommends to town council to abandon the road. Is that how it works?
Take me to, uh, you go on. What's up? Go on. The, the statutory, I'll ask Mr. Lito to chime in if he feels to, but the, my recollection of the statutory process is that, um, it's simply, uh, it requires the A24 referral, which is one statute, which goes to planning and zoning for their A24 report, but the act of discontinuance of a roadway is a matter before the legislative body, not the Planning and Zoning Commission.
No, and I understand.
It is decided by council, right?
I was just-
So council does the notifications to residents and take any-
Or, so if there's no public input in town council after you notify the residents, there's, there's a resolution, or wouldn't it be? I don't really know.
There would be, there would be a public meeting, so-
Public hearing?
The statute does not require a public hearing, but there would be noticed, they would be noticed of the meeting that they could attend and voice their concerns, but it's not a public hearing per se.
During public-
It's a matter on the agenda, so they would be able, they would certainly be able to speak. I mean, that, that's the point of the notice.
Okay. So what, what's the planning and zoning call on the whole matter?
Other than the A24, uh, report, I don't believe there is one.
I, I thought that, that we would notify in planning and zoning. I believe that if we were going to abandon the road, that I believe that planning and zoning would have notified the people that are on that road, that this was being considered and that we were going to abandon it.
No, it's not, it's not an application before planning and zoning, it's an app, it's, it's a request that's done by the council, which is why it's a little bit different.
All right. And the other question is I had is, uh, where did the request come from, abandon the road? Did that come from the First Selectmen or did that come from the applicant?
It came from the property owner, one of the property owners. It's an LLC, but there's a letter.
Oh, thank you, that's all.
All right, thanks, man. All right. No other business coming before the town council. I am going to adjourn this meeting. Any other public participation first? Hearing none, I'm going to adjourn this meeting at 8:24 PM. And we'll see everyone at our next regularly scheduled meeting.